Recording has started.
Got it. Thank you. Good evening. I'm now calling the Tuesday, March twenty first, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting of the Los Altos County Fire District Board of Commissioners to order. Time is seven oh three P M. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call of the commissioners to establish a quorum for item number two.
Right. Commissioners, I will be conducting all roll calls this evening in the same order. Please remember the order so that you are prepared to provide your comment or vote. Commissioner Spreen.
Here.
Vice President Sherlock. Here. Commissioner Basiji. Here. Commissioner McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner Tonka.
Yeah.
Commissioner Tyson.
Here.
Commissioner Warren.
Here.
And we have five of the seven commissioners present, which is a quorum.
Thank you, District Clerk Vargas. We'll now go on to item two, which is to approve the remote meeting via teleconference based on determination that meeting in person would present imminent risks to the health or safety of attendees as a result of the declared state of emergency for winter storms in Santa Clara County in accordance with Government Code Section five four nine five three subsection E one B. Members of the staff, county council, and I met today to review the weather event conditions and concluded there are sufficient concerns that meeting in person would present imminent risks to the health or safety of attendees. But we noted the increasing and powerful winds and wind gusts toppling up trees into power lines and across roads, conditions on the roads with a loss of traffic signal lights, like right down in Los Altos, schools under shelter and cover to protect students from falling trees, a lot of nixle notifications from surrounding jurisdictions, and a three P M. report on the weather and wind events to continue into the evening hours from the county ops area teleconference with county departments, the jurisdictions, and agencies. All these factors led us to recommend that the board invoke its authority to meet via teleconference during a declared state of emergency. County Council for that. Do you have any comment on this?
Uh, nothing beyond that. President Spreen, that was well summarized. Um, I think the standard is straightforward, but I'm happy to answer questions about it. Um, but I I leave it to the board and staff to um, provide any additional information and then conduct the roll call vote.
Great, thank you. Uh, in discussion by commissioners on this item, which again is to approve a uh, this meeting by teleconference for the emergency reasons? Any questions? Please.
You make a motion. I so moved that we proceed with this meeting by teleconference.
Great, thank you. Is there any public, any discussion from the commission? Any? Any public comment on this item?
Not seeing any.
Great, thank you. In that case, if there's no further discussion, we will now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call.
Okay. President Spreen.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka.
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson. And Commissioner Warren.
Yes.
Okay, and the item passes five to zero with two absents.
Great, thank you. So we can now proceed with the commission meeting and continue with the roll call. District Clerk Vargas, could you please proceed?
So yes, uh, just uh, information that this meeting will be video recorded and posted on the district's website. Because we are video conferencing, we will follow a strict protocol for the benefit of the recording. We will indicate when commissioners, staffers, and the public will provide comment. If you have called into the meeting and are not using a webcam, please state your name prior to providing your comment for the benefit of the recording. Please practice considerate, considerate video conferencing etiquette by muting your line when you are not speaking and limiting destructive behavior. So now I'd like uh, for the benefit of the recording to present a present, to conduct a presenters, consultants, and role, staff roll call. Fire Chief Kircau.
Present.
Speak up. Um, Community Education and Risk Reduction Manager Gluhan.
Present.
Emergency Services Manager Bebe.
That.
Programs Planning and Grants Manager Rendler. Hmm. They're together. Look at that. Okay, uh, Budget Manager Morielli.
Present.
Um, Events Coordinator, Firewise Coach Klein.
Present.
General Manager Logan.
Done.
And Deputy County Council Forbath.
Present.
So presenters, consultants, and staff are accounted for.
Great, thank you. Uh.
All right, Corey, I would mention that Jeff Tarantino, I believe, is on the line. He'll be making comments tonight also.
Okay, great. Um, so for the benefit of the roll call, then, uh, our engineer, uh, Friar and Lord Engineer Jeff Tarantino.
Yep, present.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. We move on to item three, uh, some present remarks. Uh, all I want to do is thank you for being here on an anxiety-producing night. Um, and we will conduct things quickly but responsibly because we do have business to conduct. Um, and also, which is quick enough, thanks both to the staff who has been monitoring this situation for the past couple of days leading up to this meeting. And the planning for this meeting has gone on in a variety of different ways to make sure we could figure out how to have this meeting. And also, a note of thanks to the town of Los Altos Hills, who was made, made their chambers available to us and even to today was available. In fact, it was the power outage uh, earlier today at Town Hall that kind of helped really trigger the thought that things are unstable there. We got to find other ways to do it. So um, appreciate everyone's help in making this meeting happen. Uh, moving on to item four, public comment. Persons wishing to address the commission on any subject not on the agenda may do so now. Please note, however, the commission is not able to undertake extended discussion or action tonight on items not on the agenda. Items may be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on the next available agenda. District policy is to limit public testimony to three minutes per speaker unless the number of speakers requires the commission present to impose shorter time limits. Yeah, that will be a case tonight. Do you have any public comment on items not on the agenda?
Seeing none. I'm not seeing any.
Thank you. Move on to item five, the consent counter and changes to the order of the agenda will be coming into play. Um, are there any comments from, starting with the uh, consent counter items? Are there any comments from staff on these items? And everything's pretty well memorized in the packet. Okay, great. Um. I'm going to make comment on the order of the items due, due to the weather conditions and the possibility of power outages and the fact that we may drop off at any moment. I expect things to happen for people this evening. I'd like to propose that we change the order of the agenda to consider the items requiring commission action to be moved to directly follow this item. That way, we sort of move reports to the end. Uh, that would move items eight A, which is approving the H I Z Assessment and Rebate Program Guidelines and Draft Advisory, moving that up. Moving item eleven, which is approving the Operations and Project Manager Employment Agreement, up. And moving item twelve, approving the First Amendment to the Programs Planning and Grants Manager Employment Agreement. So basically, it's our monthly, uh, you know, when we, when we have the employment agreement items, and in this case, an approval of the H I Z program, moving those up just after this particular consent agenda item. Are there any questions from the commission on that? Or anyone like to make additional changes or any comments on that? Not seeing any, uh, sounds good. That case, I would entertain a motion for that. I see.
Tyson will move the uh, aforementioned moving up of, was it eight A, eleven, and twelve?
And that would include any, and also the consent counter as well.
Uh, I thought that was right after the consent.
Yeah, we're already on the, we're on the consent calendar, so the only move would be to move items eight A, eleven, and twelve to, to follow this item.
So this move is just for the schedule change. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, uh, do you have a second?
Second.
Great. Mr. Tonka, um, any comments and discussion, any public comments on that change of agenda order? Seeing none, appreciate that. That case, uh, Commissioner, District Clerk Vargas, could you conduct the roll call?
I'll be Commissioner Vargas if you'd like, but. Uh. President Spring.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner McDonald.
Yeah.
Commissioner Tonka.
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson.
Yes.
Commissioner Warren.
Yes.
And the motion passes five to zero with two absent.
Great, that will change the order. So now we should address the consent counter items themselves. Um, are there any questions about those? Seeing none, any discussion? Any public comments on the consent counter items? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion on to, uh, see if.
Um, oh, I think Roger, the, the motion that we just took was, and correct me if I'm wrong, Aaron, it was to uh, approve the consent calendar and to approve the change to the agenda in one go, or do we need separate?
I sense confusion about that, so we kind of sound like we separated it. So let's go ahead and, for clarity, do this separate motion here for the.
Sounds good. Sounds good.
I moved that we approved the cons- uh, consent calendar.
And second.
One second.
Tyson. Any discussion? Any public comments?
My only discussion is, it looked like you had a two hour fifty-seven minute meeting, so I feel a little less guilty about missing it.
Yeah. Oh. Is that what it was? Oh, that, yeah, it was, it was a barn burner, that's for sure. But uh, this will be a little shorter. Uh, okay, uh, District Clerk Vargas, not Commissioner Vargas, could you please, uh, conduct the roll call?
Okay, President Spreen.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka.
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson.
Yes.
Commissioner Warren.
Yes.
And the motion passes five to zero with two absent.
Great, thank you. Okay. Because the change of the order of the agenda has been approved, we will move to item eight A, which is the H I Z Assessment and Rebate Program. Uh, General Manager Logan, could you please provide the report for this?
Yes, thank you, uh, President Spreen, commissioners and public. Uh, the recommendation is to approve the H I Z Assessment and Rebate Program Guidelines and the Draft Advisory that you see before you tonight. And the draft advisory will be updated from time to time as the program progresses and operations develop. Staff proposes to launch the H I Z Assessment Rebate Program as a pilot program with no more than five properties per, per month. The pilot program is recommended to commence in mid-April, focusing on the San Antonio Hills area. Residents in this area will receive targeted mailers with information on the rebate program and how to participate. The pilot program will accept the first twenty-five registrants and be scheduled and will schedule the assessments over the course of the summer months. If the pilot program processes and implementation and deliverables are successful, staff will increase the number of H I Zs and so update the commission. After participating in the pilot program and receiving the rebates, participants will be asked to complete a satisfaction survey to help us analyze the pilot program's process, efficiencies, and deliverables, and then staff will make adjustments as needed. The rebate is fifty percent or up to three thousand dollars for H I Z assessment recommendations completed by the residents within the zero to one hundred foot defensible space zone. Consultation on the program guidelines were held with the County Fire Prevention Division Chief and with Fire Safe Council. The sixty-day window to submit the invoices uh, could be extended if due to extenuating circumstances. So I recommend approval, and I'm happy to answer questions, and that's the end of my report, which is really summarized in the um, advisory and in the memorandum that's attached to the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, General Manager Logan. Any questions from the commission? Not really seeing any. Great. Um, see, I entertain a motion then to approve this H I Z Assessment and Rebate Program Guidelines.
Warren moves. Warren moves to approve item eight A.
And second, please.
Second.
Second.
I got a second from Tonka. I heard first. Um, great, thank you. Now open for discussion. Any discussion from the commission? I see we'll get into the public in a second. No discussion from the commission, but we have a public comments on this item. I see a hand raised. Uh, I guess Alan, you can head the floor. There you go.
Thanks very much. Uh, just a couple of questions. Uh, one, I was curious as to why tree removal was, uh, does not qualify for rebate if it's within the specified areas that need to be cleared out. And secondly, um, I was curious as to why the um, San Antonio Hills areas were selected as a place to start. Um, is that because they have the higher, highest fire risk? Certainly, the, the portion of San Antonio Hills, the, the majority of San Antonio Hills, which is on the other side of the two eighty, certainly is not the uh, most at-risk area. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Anyone like to address those questions?
Yeah, I can address them just uh, quickly. Um, the tree removal is in um, deference to the management audit and the respect for that audit and just again, it's a pilot program. We're starting out wanting vegetation removed and uh, avoiding the tree removal process. Uh, that's, that's the thinking there. And San Antonio Hills is an interesting opportunity because we've done so much up in the north section of Los Altos Hills. We've not gotten down into the area that's more the unincorporated area. And uh, so we'd like to do something there for that community, and then also, we're going to have some, um, the strategic fuel break is down there. And also, the next um, road um, evacuation will be down in that area. So we're trying to start the targeting going down to that area. So that's the thinking of staff in the location in the San Antonio Hills area. Thank you.
Yeah, one thing I mentioned about tree removal also is that, you know, I have trees around, are in my house, and as explained to me, the goal is not to get rid of all the trees around my house, but it is to, to treat the trees and get, get the ladders fuel removed and get the branches removed and so forth, and treat the trees. So it doesn't have to, you know, don't have to have a giant tree removed to uh, really make a difference in how the houses are prepared. Thank you. Any other public comments? Great, seeing none, then I, let's see, we have a motion, and I guess that the, we can now vote on the resolution. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct that roll call.
President Spreen.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yeah.
Commissioner Tonka.
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson.
Yes.
Commissioner Warren.
Yes.
Thank you. And the motion passes five to zero with two absent.
Thank you very much. Uh, as approved of the change to the order of agenda, uh, under the consent calendar, we will now move on to the two personnel items, beginning with item eleven, approving the Operations Project Manager Employment Agreement. Uh, General Manager Logan, can you present this?
Yes, thank you. I'm very pleased to present this. Thank you, President Spreen. Uh, the cover sheet for the employment agreement provides the background for this position. The Operations Manager, which is a current position budgeted in F Y twenty-two and twenty-three, and then again in twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, is um, is vacant. And that position is retitled for purposes of this part-time position as Operations Project Manager. There was a section added to the position description uh, for projects that are to focus on uh, H I C Assessment and Rebate Program, Development and Operations Project Management of Evacuation Routes, Emergency Fire and Access Roads, Temporary Refuge Areas or T R As Development, Zone Haven and Evacuation Plan Coordination, Coordination of Fuel Cruise Projects, and Coordination of Activities Related to the Community Strategic Fuel Break and Mid-Pen Open Space, Updates on Early Warning Notification Programs, and to assist with implementation and revision of the two O, of the twenty-twenty-three District Community Wildfire Protection Plan Annex Four, and Operational Project Management and Programs and Projects with Partner Agency Stakeholders and Public. So that's quite a list for a part-time position, but it gives a good boundaries around what this position will be focusing its operational project management on. I'm really pleased that Fire Captain Paige Russell, who's retired, is the person who can fill this part-time operational project manager position. Captain Russell comes to the district with distinguished credentials, experience, and background. Captain Russell is well-versed in fire protection, prevention, and community experience to help residents establish resiliency. She has wildfire fighting experience and understands the urgency of a fire district to develop and implement projects that reduce wildfire risk and also promote emergency preparedness programs for residents in the event of any disaster. Um, in accordance with uh, Government Code Section five four nine five three subsection C subsection three, it requires the commission to orally report a summary of the proposed compensation before taking final action to adopt that compensation here by approving the employment agreement. The proposed compensation is described in the Proposed Operation Project Manager Employment Agreement included in the materials for the agenda item. The Proposed At-Will Part-Time Employment Agreement includes an effective start date of May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and includes the following compensation. Wages, the proposed agreement sets the pay rate at eighty-eight uh, at, at eighty, eighty, I think it's eighty dollars per hour, if that's correct. Base compensation shall not exceed eighty-four thousand four hundred and eighty dollars on an annual basis without written approval of the G M and notification to the president and the Board of Commissioners. Benefits, under the proposed agreement, the position will receive certain benefits, including sick leave of twenty-four hours per year upon completion of a hundred and twenty calendar days of employment, sick leave subject to a maximum forty-eight hours accrual cap with no sick leave payout or termination, vehicle stipend of a hundred and fifty dollars per month, uniform allowance of up to two thousand eight hundred dollars per first year of employment for specific items identified in the proposed employment contract. The Proposed Employment Agreement does not provide vacation, holiday pay, medical benefits, or retirement benefits. District provides laptop and supportive equipment necessary of performance of duties. Um, let me check. Corey, can you check on the hourly salary on that?
Yes, it's, I'm eighty dollars per hour.
Yes, it is eighty dollars per hour. Thank you.
My, my bad typo.
It's okay. We didn't have enough time to read this three times before we went to the meeting, so eighty dollars is the hourly rate of pay, which is the standard rate for the project manager. So with that, um, that is my report, and I turn it back over to you, President Spreen. Thank you.
Thank you, General Manager. Uh, any clarifying questions from the commission? Seeing none. I would say this just continues a streak of really bringing in a lot of experience into us as a group. So it's really exciting to have her join us and uh, help us continue these projects. I would now entertain a motion. The commissioner making the motion and the commissioner seconding, please state your names.
Warren moves.
Warren moves.
McDonald seconds.
There you go. Sounds good. Uh, let's see, any discussion? And there's a lot of bureaucratic things, don't need much discussion. Any public comments on this? Seeing none, I guess we can move to the vote. District Clerk Vargas, could you give the roll call?
President Spreen.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yeah.
Commissioner Tonka.
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson.
Yes.
Commissioner Warren.
Yes.
And the motion passes five to zero with two absent.
Thank you. And once again, I appreciate everyone letting us get through all these business items first before we get to the more uh, interesting and broad report items. I'm sure we had a lot of questions on those things, but we have one more to do, which is moving on to item twelve.
President Spreen, can I take a moment, please? I'd like to introduce your new employee. Um, District Operations Project Manager Paige Russell. Uh, Paige, thank you for joining us with your power out and by your cellular. Could you say hello? And uh, we welcome you to the, to the team and to the group. We're delighted, delighted to have you, Paige. Thank you.
Thank you.
Few comments?
Very exciting first meeting.
We've had a lot of, each meeting lately has been, had a completely unique, different flavor, and it's continuing that trend. Uh, but thank you for joining us. Really excited to have you on board, and it's a, it's a great team.
Likewise. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Uh, moving on to item twelve, we have one more uh, action item to, that we've moved forward, approving the First Amendment to the Programs Planning and Grants Manager Employment Agreement. Uh, let's see, General Manager Logan, could you present this item too?
Yes, thank you. I would. And you know, every year, uh, we come up with an annual salary review and a performance opportunity. And so I'm really delighted to bring this to you, and I, I really cannot believe it's almost been a year now, uh, as of April nineteenth, when Eugenia Rendler joined us. And uh, Eugenia, I thank you so much for joining the district and for all your wonderful performance and all that you've done for the district. And so this is an opportunity to provide a um, uh, an annual salary increase. And to do so, uh, the Government Code Section five four nine five three subsection C subsection three requires the commission to orally report a summary of the proposed compensation before taking final action to adopt that compensation hereby approving the First Amendment to the Employment Agreement for Eugenia Rendler. The proposed compensation is described in the Proposed First Amendment to the Programs Planning and Grants Manager Employment Agreement included in the materials in this agenda item. The Proposed At-Will Full-Time Employment Agreement includes an effective compensation start date of April first, two thousand twenty-three, and includes the following compensation. Wages, the adjusted total compensation to eighty-eight dollars per hour. Base compensation shall not exceed one hundred eighty-three thousand forty dollars on an annual basis without written approval of the general manager and notification to the president of the Board of Commissioners. All of the compensation and benefits remain the same. The proposed agreement does not provide vacation, holiday pay, medical benefits, or retirement benefits. Um, that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, General Manager Logan. Any clarifying questions? Seeing none. Uh, in that case, I'd entertain a motion. And a second.
Tonka so moved.
Thank you.
Warren seconds.
Warren seconds. Great, thank you. Uh, is there any discussion from the commission on this? Seeing none, any public comments on this employment agreement extension? Seeing none, let's move to a vote. District Clerk Vargas, could you give us a roll call?
President Spreen.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yeah.
Commissioner Tonka.
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson.
Yes.
Commissioner Warren.
Yes.
And the motion passes five to zero with two absent.
Thank you very much, and this is also an opportunity for me to thank you, Jenny, for a year of a lot of new things for us, and we are, you know, we are expanding our programs. It's because of the experience you brought with us, so thank you for that, and look forward to the next, the coming year. All right. Thank you, everyone, for letting us rearrange things, and especially, uh, Fire Chief Kircau, thank you for, for uh, delaying your portion until now, because item six is the Fire Chief Report. And I will uh, hand it over to you. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, President Spreen, commissioners. Uh, thank you. Um, let me screen share. Uh, perfect, that, that works for me. Thank you, Corey. Uh, let me open this up a little bit more. Um, I want to apologize um, for any tardiness in uh, these reports. Usually, we try to get them to Corey or the, the clerk, Los Altos Fields Commissioners, uh, Fire District Clerk a little bit sooner. We moved to a new records management system for the fire side of the House reporting. Um, it's the same uh, records management system that's used for capturing EMS calls. Um, but we were using a separate system for fire calls. Um, and as we worked through some of the alignment of data fields, um, uh, there was just some delays in getting this report to you. So as you see there, you'll see that uh, this is the report for February. Um, you can go to the next slide there, uh, Corey, if you have access. Perfect. Um, so again, just to call your attention to February, it's a shorter month. It's only twenty-eight days. We only had fifty-six total calls in the district in the Los Altos Hills County, uh, County, uh, Fire District. Um, you see that on the left-hand side again, that uh, for two thousand twenty-three, we are not quite back up to pre-pandemic times, uh, pre-pandemic, that's two thousand nineteen, a hundred and eighty-two uh, calls uh, for the year, but I, uh, to date. But I will tell you, everywhere else in the district, everywhere else in the County Fire Response Service area, we are beyond the pandemic level. So I, we sort of anticipate that perhaps these calls volumes will, will also go up over time. Um, you didn't have any dollar loss in terms of, uh, this is for February, an incident that created dollar loss that was captured in our records management system. Um, the uh, challenge always is just getting units on scene quickly, just because it's such a large geographical area for the district. Um, but again, your urban densities and rural densities includes call processing time. Again, that's the time that somebody picks up the phone, calls, and units get dispatched, turned out, meaning do they get into turnouts, or do they just get on the rig wearing, uh, the daily, uh, uh, what's called class B uniform, and then headed out the door and then getting on scene. Um, so other than that, there was um, Community Education Risk Reduction activities, eight programs total with a hundred thirty-nine participants. A lot of those, I believe, are still a hybrid or perhaps just virtual um, as we work through some of these programs. And um, I do want to report out, uh, again, some significant weather uh, in March. Uh, we saw it last Tuesday, um, during um, the Los Altos Hills Club meeting. Um, and uh, when I look at, and I'll just quickly give you some numbers here. What we looked, what we see, uh, just even for, all right, gotta rearrange my screen with this up here. Where are we at here? There we go. Um, uh, for just the month of March alone, we're at eighty-two calls, and that does not include some of the weather-related calls that don't have a call type added yet. So we look forward to reporting out next month, and I'll try to carve away some of them that are specific for those two days, today in particular, and then last Tuesday, that really generated. Today in particular, and then last Tuesday, that really generated a whole host of calls and give you a better, a, a, a better snapshot of which calls were weather-related. And that's the end of my report.
Great, thank you. Any discussion, Commissioners? Any clarifying questions? Any, I know, I want to thank you for everything that went on last week, since I was, I got to see a glimpse of it since I was at that. Meeting on last Tuesday. Any public questions or comments? Not seeing any. Great. Well, thank you so much. Thank you for being here, and thank you for all you're going to be doing, I'm sure, with the more reports coming in today.
Thank you.
We'll be moving on to item seven, the General Manager Report. General Manager Logan. This will be your turn.
Okay. Like I haven't said enough yet tonight, huh? Cory?
Yeah, give me one, one sec. My, sure. Looking on the wrong screen.
Well, the first screen is a familiar sight, Slide one, and that is. We truly have experienced. The too-familiar image of weeks of road closures, down trees, and power disruptions. Emergency Services Manager. Bibi will provide details related to the weather events in her presentation under her item. Moving to Slide two, please, Cory. Storm damage for weather events. This is a, a media release by the county. Urging residents to report property damage that occurred before or beginning or after March ninth. And there's an attachment to the General Manager's report that gives the details and how to file that report. So I wanted to bring that to the Commission's awareness, that that, that is available to county residents. Slide three. Talks about how we've developed our protocol internally during weather events or emergency events. For the first priority of staff is their situational awareness. And what we do is we participate in multiple daily calls with county ops, area emergency briefings. And we do site assessments, and our site assessments are at the arc and the emergency trailers, just to make sure that we have. Our facilities up and ready. And again, I think Emergency Services Manager Bibi is going to talk about that in her report. Next thing we do is we update the Commissioners and staff for their situational awareness. And then we need to be prepared to respond and support residents, certs, and our Los Altos Hills County Fire District Partners, which are the Water Utilities, Los Altos Hills Town, Almonte Fire Station. And the infrastructure. And again, Emergency Services Manager Bibi will report how we did that during the last weather event. Moving on to Slide three. To advise the Commission that the two thousand twenty-three to twenty-seven strategic plan is now up on the website. And that is the link that will attach to that website and encourage you to take a look at it. It's a nice flip book. If we were meeting in person, we have hardbound, our hard copies of that we would have presented tonight, but we'll do that at our next meeting. And then you'll notice on the page, there are the links to the prior strategic plan. So this district now has three strategic plans, I think all very well-developed. Very, very real-time and really very authentic to the district. It's not off-the-shelf kind of boilerplate strategic plan. It is written for the district by the district, this district staff, through Marcy Scott, and many kudos to Marcy for helping us through two of these strategic plans. Moving on to Slide five. This is the vinyl selected by Commissioner McDonald, along with retired Fire Captain Ryan Cronin at our last meeting. And I wanted to update the Commission that with the selection of this vinyl, it will be installed by, by the contractor. Through the oversight of County Fire. We will receive an invoice, and whether the invoice comes in and we pay out of our FY twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Or the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget, both of those budgets have available funding. And the funding will be used depending upon the installation and the invoicing when it occurs. And I don't know if Russ Morally, who's on this, this meeting, would like to say a few words there, but Russ, I wanted to be sure and point that out as you asked me to do. Russ, do you have any comment that you want to make there on the budget?
Yes, General Manager, Logan, you're completely accurate. We do have budgets both in twenty-two, twenty-three for this amount. And we specifically budgeted for this improvement in twenty, in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget as well. So my understanding and discussion with you is that there may be an immediacy as to the need for this flooring, a health and safety immediacy. So in that case, we can accommodate that in the current year budget if needed. As you mentioned, if the invoice comes in after. June thirtieth, then the next year budget has this provision as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for confirming my understanding. Thank you. Okay, moving on to Slide six. This is an important event that's going to be taking place on April nineteenth. At San Antonio Hills Homeowners Association is their annual meeting. They've not met for a couple of years due to the COVID concerns and restrictions. So the Fire, Los Altos Hills County Fire District. County Fire Department and multiple county departments will be presenting the annual information and updates to the San Antonio Hills Homeowners Association. San Antonio Hills, interestingly, serves the unincorporated area of Los Altos and Los Altos Hills. Approximately nine hundred and fifty residential parcels and was established in nineteen forty-one and incorporated in nineteen forty-seven. And hats off, kudos to Commissioner McDonald, who is now the representative in seat one of that, and also to Roger Spring, who also represents that area for the Commission. And more information, if you would like, on San Antonio Hills, please do contact their, their site, sanantoniohills.com. And then moving on to the last slide is to inform the Commission that Prisma Hills Water District will start. Planning on a water main improvement project. They're not yet at the design. Phase of this. It's just under a discussion now. But district staff and F and L engineers met with Prisma Hills Water District team to review the project. And Captain Denise Gluen retired, made a site visit, talked with residents, and took these photos. And good job, Denise. Those are great photos of the fire hydrant that is there on a private road. On Radcliffe Lane. Jump, I communicated with the residents who were concerned about how the hydrant was going to be treated during this water main improvement project. And I'll be providing them updates. And then the CIP project is in, is, it's before the design phase, and it's not yet in the construction phase. So I've got Jeff Tarantino on the phone. Jeff, would you like to say a few words and kind of embellish what I've said or provide any comment? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Jay. And Commissioners, apologies for not having a video tonight. I, I have power and everything at my house, but I forgot to bring my laptop home with my camera, so that made it impossible to put my camera on. Anyway, so yes, we, we had a productive meeting with the Prisma Hills staff on Monday. Got a better understanding of what the goals of the Prisma Hills project is to improve the overall resiliency of the water distribution system. And through, through discussions with Denise, I think we're going to be able to come up with a solution, working with Prisma Hills throughout the design phase to. Provide adequate fire protection with the location of one and potentially two new hydrants as a replacement for the hydrant that's, that's shown in the photos here. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. If no questions, President Spring, that's the end of my, my General Manager Report. Thank you.
No, that's great. Any, any comments from Commissioners or questions? First of all, I really appreciate the update on the, the fire hydrant, because I, I saw the letters from the residents who were probably concerned about, you know. Not having full information of what was going on, and I think, sure, our oversight there will bring them some. Relieve some anxiety to make sure that things will be, will be handled responsibly. And thank you, Jeff, for, for really watching out for that, for us as well.
Could I, if I could comment before we move on, go ahead. I didn't need to interrupt, though.
No, please, please.
Okay. What was really interesting is I'm just so pleased for the protocol we now have in dealing with fire hydrant issues that come up. It could be what I call a whacked hydrant that's been hit, struck by a vehicle. Or it could be this kind of a situation where there's a water main replacement through our partner, Prisma Hills Water District. And now we have the opportunity to relocate and look at the fire protection aspect of how that hydrant is going to be. Joined into the water main. So at the meeting on Monday, it was interesting to me to watch the dialogue between the engineers. These are water system engineers. Such as Prisma Hills and, and Jeff Tarantino from F and L. Very interesting conversation, a lot of technical talk, a lot of mapping. And then we go from that conversation to the conversation that Denise Gluen enjoins, and that is from a firefighter perspective. And so what Denise and Ryan bring to the table is their expertise as wildfire firefighters experienced. Looking at that same area and knowing where's the fire truck going to go. What's the fire truck? How's it gonna park? How are we going to get the best protection? Since it's on a Rastodaro open preserve, what's the difference between fighting a structural fire threat versus a wildfire, open space threat? All of those mixes came into the conversation, and I, it could have been a videotape on how to do a really robust three sixty look at where to put a fire hydrant. Which seems so easy, but it is an art form all in itself. So kudos to Denise, to Ryan, who's not here with, on the meeting tonight. But Denise, I wanted to toss it to you, because I know you've been very influential talking with these residents, and your comments or perspective real quick.
Yes, thank you, Jay, Commissioners and the public. Yeah, it was, Ryan and I went out, we were actually doing a ground truthing for the Page Mill evacuation route maintenance project. Lytacote is where Radcliffe is located, so that's on the, the northern edge of our district. As Jay had mentioned, right next to the Rastodaro open space and the end of Prisma Hills Water District boundaries. So we actually were out looking at the hydrant, and the resident came out, met us. Kind of explained what he knew as a background on where they got there, and, and what had happened was a surveyor came out. And there's a, an older pipeline that comes from the two eighty direction. And in order to make sure resiliency and retrofit for earthquakes, that's one of the reasons they do the capital improvement project. They were out surveying that, and that's why we hadn't been notified yet by Prisma Hills. Talked to the resident, you know, the open space is definitely a wildland threat. Got their perspective and some, you know, some ideas. And then, like Jay said, went to the meeting, and, and it's great to have the engineering tools and the understanding of the, the different size. Supply lines and, and whatnot, and what Prisma's needs are as a, a water purveyor. But then, like Jay said, to, to look at what is the possibility of, you know, if we move the hydrant, structured firefighting is a different hydrant use maybe than a wildland fire for position. For where you're going to take your apparatus in, how you position it. So we're looking at the possibility of getting a better. Access down around a Rastodaro Road and improving a hydrant maybe down there. If we decide to move the hydrant to the beginning of Radcliffe. There won't be a loss of a hydrant. It might actually be an improvement of fire protection, and that we're going to try to see if we can encourage some firewise. Community participation up there in the Lytacote area also. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Excellent.
That's a great.
Thank you.
That's a great synergy of tasks there to be dealing with them at the same time. And I'm, and as you describe it, I'm sorry, I missed that conversation. I would like to have learned all the factors are there. I also want to give a quick shout out to. Strategic Plan Team and all the staff who made it happen to have it up on the website and done. It really is the capstone of having a lot of work that was done. Any other Commissioner comments? Seeing none. I see some public comments. I see Alan. You may comment. Alan, can't hear you yet. Alan, would you like the floor?
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you for the explanation about the hydrant. I'm curious whether or not there was a representative from Central Fire there. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I can respond very quickly. That will be forthcoming. This was a preliminary meeting to prepare us for the engineering meeting. And then we always have the protocol whenever a water main is being moved and hydrants are going in or being relocated or coming out. To always, always involve the Fire Marshal's Office, and so that will, will also be done. But that, there was not a person in that representation there, because the meeting was called very quickly. Thank you.
Thank you for that response.
Yes.
Okay, seeing no other public comments, we will move on to item nine. This is the Emergency Services Manager Bibi. Please provide your report. I know we've had some exciting emergency things happening too, so.
Very, very exciting. Too much excitement for me. Good evening, everybody. Nice to see everybody's smiling faces. Thank you for having me. I think Cory's gonna share my slides in a minute. So I did things a little differently than I did last time, so it's better, easier reading, I hope. But this is sort of an outline of what we went through, starting on March eighth, and then culmination of March fifteenth. Obviously, I didn't have time to report out on the, the fun we've had the last twenty-four hours. But really, you know, most of what, what Jay was alluding to is, is really our number one. Thing is, is safety, and only safety of the district staff, safety of the Commissioners, safety of the residents. So we started having some coordinated area calls on March eighth. State emergency was declared through the state, down to the county level, then to the local level. I believe that the, the town backdated to March ninth. That's when the first nixle came out from the town, kind of updating everybody, everybody on the potential of the atmospheric river. That continued a couple of days of coordinated calls with Ops Area. I think I explained that last, I didn't do it again this time, but I think I explained last time kind of how it works with the Office of Emergency. Management is our sort of overarching Ops Area people that run the EOC. And then we get coordinated calls with other agencies, LID agencies in the county. We talk, discuss weather and power outages, water levels and possible flooding and things like that. So on March thirteenth, things kind of started to kick in a little bit, you know, just kind of the planning phase and the monitoring phases, still doing the daily briefings to the staff. After the calls, there's usually about two a day. On a really bad weather day, we'll have three of these op area calls. On March thirteenth, we started hearing that there was definitely going to be that increase in wind gusts. Potential and atmospheric river coming again. So this one was, you know, really the concern was obviously power outages, the high wind, the gusts. So on March thirteenth, the town sent another nixle out. Every time they send a nixle, we go onto our website. We have. We have a little banner, so we'll change it, you know, like March, you know, two thousand twenty-three weather. And then we have a tag or a little block that you click that goes right to the nixles that the town has set, so that way we have really good, you know, messaging, and we're all saying the same thing. That messaging comes from these op area meetings as well as the Santa Clara County Joint Informational Center. On March fourteenth is sort of when all the fun started, and I have actual, some, a couple more slides to show you of those actual days. But really, it started for us around twelve hundred hours when we were at the Los Altos Hills luncheon. I'll get into that with my next, my next slides. About thirteen fifty, we had a power outage with the whole town. It actually trapped two of the attendees of the luncheon that were trying to leave in an elevator. We were called to assist, and then after we, we got that, through that, we started to go back to our residents. And I started getting calls from the town staff, talking about possibly activating the EOC and utilizing CERT. As many of you know, from the time between about twelve hundred hours to fourteen hundred, there was, you know, wind gusts up for fifty, sixty miles an hour. Lots of down trees, lots of down power lines, lots of life safety issues. We were actually told at the luncheon to possibly shelter in place. Just because there were so many trees down. So we got through that, that night, and then the next morning, I went up to this, to the Almonte Fire Station. And started communicating again with town. They reported they were out of power. They had no voice text capabilities. And then I realized that our internet was down at the fire station, although they have backup generator. We had no internet to, to try and help and work through things, so. I started making some phone calls to one of the supervisors, Dave Stewart, and said, hey, you know, you want to come down here, put on Starlink, so we can get it going. At the same time, I received a phone call from FirstNet, and I'll get into that a little bit. Asking me to, to help with the town and the water district, because the water district, Prisma Water, had no internet, voice, text. They were unable to communicate with any of their, their field people, and they asked me if I can help. And so I'll kind of go into that in the next slide here. So we can get to the next slide, Cory. That'd be great. Here we are, the calm before the storm. Bad, bad, bad joke. However, we were having a great time at this luncheon. Lots of staff members, you know, General Manager Logan, Eugenia Rendler, I don't know everybody's full title, so Cory was there, our clerk. Myself and Denise, I left you off. How could I do that? Your picture's sitting right there. I apologize for that. Um, uh, our president spring was there. We had town staff, uh, Peter Perdod, um, Cody Einfeld and Deborah Padovan. Um, who I typically work with, that's kind of our little E O C team. We had Sheriff Johnson, under sheriff binder, Captain Venezuela, who was our assigned captain for Los Altos Hills. Um, we had Santa Clara County Fire Chief Kirkow and her Director of Business Services, um, Nebla, Nebla, hopefully I said that right. Um, and then we had town council mayor Swan and council member Schmidt. Um, we were there as per a presentation of the state of the town, um, that was given by my mayor Swan and city manager Parteja. We had a safety, town safety, um, presentation with, uh, one of our, you know, very big leaders in the community, Abreji Batsia. And then, um, Chief Kirkow started her talk, um, and started off by saying that there's, there was like a hundred and fifty-five calls that had been coming in in the past, you know, hour. And, um, if I misquote, um, Chief Kirkow, please correct me. Um, and that, you know, people were calling for all kinds of things and, and really tying up the nine one one system. So, um, we were kind of talking about that and then I was approached by, um, a staff member who said, we have a real emergency, uh, we need you. And so I ended up walking away, um, I grabbed Denise and if you wanna go to the net, and then Denise did a presentation after, but we'll go to the next slide, please Cory. So, um, the real like emergency was that there was two people that were stuck in the elevator. Uh, the good thing is they ended up being certs and we knew them. So we were able to kind of talk them through. They were stuck between the first and second floor. Um, they had already been in the elevator for about twenty minutes when we got there. Um, so just kind of keeping them calm and updating them, um, Denise, um, suggested they call the elevator, got, uh, company, um, put in emergency order, um, they were already starting to do that. Uh, we also made sure that they were able to get through to nine one one. They did that as well. Um, but it took, uh, you know, ten to fifteen minutes to get, um, somebody there, the elevator guy showed up and then another crew from county, uh, Rescue Seventy-Seven showed up. Um, and this is all of us kind of assisting to get, um, the two people out of the elevator. And then on the way home, there's some pictures to show you. Um, I live in Campbell. It usually takes me about fifteen, twenty minutes if I follow the speed limit. Um, but it took us about an hour to get home. Um, everywhere, every road we went on, literally, I don't know, how many roads did we do?
Oh.
A lot, um, were down, down trees, huge trees, down power lines. Um, and then that's when I started getting phone calls from the town, um, asking if we could possibly, um, activate CERT, what could we use, you know, use them for? Um, they did suggest possibly having them come and cut trees and I said, unfortunately, we don't do that, but we can help in other ways. And then we were getting reports of a live wire down, um, on Alta Sierra. Um, and so we were talking about possibly utilizing them to, um, do some traffic control. Um, it sort of was, I think, the town was trying to get people, because there were so many calls and so many different areas, trying to get town staff out to, uh, mitigate some of this. Um, we ended up not utilizing CERT, but it's always good that people are starting to think that way. I love that the E O C and I think, you know, really our collaboration with them, you know, this is kind of unheard of for them to be asking so much for CERT. But I think it's good. It's because, you know, we have a lot of, um, you know, events we do with them now and collaboration and the town staff and, and our staff work very well together. So it's become a really nice coordinated effort, especially in these emergency situations. Um, next slide. Please Cory, thank you. So I've got some really good news to report. Um, our backup communication systems that we have in place, uh, the first one is Starlink. Showed its worth. We had, it took thirty minutes for us to get Starlink out of the box, set it up and get, um, full bars. So this is what Starlink looks like. Um, I sent a picture to Jay and she was like, oh, that's nice. You have a little, you know, cabinet with a couple of files. And I go, well, that's Starlink. She was like, oh, that's it right there in that box. And I said, yeah, that's Starlink. So that's the router that goes inside, uh, wherever you're at, you're at. And then, um, on the outside, we put it right in the apron, um, of the fire, um, the fire station. And that's the other part of it. That's the antenna part that you see. So left-hand side is the outside of, uh, Starlink antenna. Right-hand side is, uh, the router. Now, in this time period, Phil, um, after I got the phone call from FirstNet, I got in the car and I drove over to town hall and I talked to Phil Witt and I said, hey, I'm putting up Starlink. And I said, if you want to come to the firehouse, you know, come over there, stop by. So he ended up coming, so he was able to get on our Starlink and be able to start sending messages to, uh, some of his staff members. And then letting them know that we're trying to get some internet up at their office. So it was really good. He was there, uh, we were able to help him out. I showed him how I ordered the resource, which I'm gonna talk about in a minute. Um, and so that was a really nice collaboration. I got a very nice phone call from him later that night saying, thank you so much. You know, you have no idea how much you helped, um, you know, kind of, uh, prepare us and, and see what our options are. He's like, you know, the Starlink thing is super cool. I'm gonna definitely look into that. So, um, you know, really good. So thank you, thank you, thank you to the commissioners and, um, to the staff that approved this. Uh, it, it definitely proved its, its, its worth in this. Uh, next slide, please Cory. So we always talk about FirstNet. Everyone kind of thinks, oh, it's great, it's the phones, um, you know, and, and they're fun and everything, but you know, we're so little. If we have a big emergency in the county, they're not gonna have resources to send to our little town. But guess what? There was a lot of emergencies in the county and they were able to send us a resource. So, um, when I went up to town hall and talked to Phil Witt and I talked to Cody, um, I said, you know, what's it looking like here? Shall I order you a resource? And they said, absolutely. Um, so once I got their kind of, you know, understanding that there's potential of us putting, um, either a big, they call it a cow, but it's a big, basically a cell phone tree in the parking lot up there. Um, or there's some other options that I wasn't sure what, what, what they were gonna give us. So at about twelve oh five, I made the resource request within an hour and twenty-five minutes. They had brought this generator and hooked it up to the actual cell phone tree behind Heritage House. It's an AT&T cell tower and everybody had full bars and full, uh, call-in and call-out capabilities. So we know that in the future, um, that's where E O C is and that's where we're gonna want to have these backup communications, not only at the E O C. But this will also help us with our certs because they're all, all on FirstNet phones when we deploy them out to do, um, recon. So, you know, it was really good to, to kind of put this in play and, and realize that this was great. So the cool thing about this generator is that, um, it will click off as soon as power goes back on. So it doesn't stay on. It's very quiet. Um, they didn't get any, uh, complaints that I know of. But, um, it was, they were able to then the next day provide that wifi and a place for residents to go. And it was because we gave them this FirstNet, so it really helped the residents as well. Um, not only the staff there at, at the town and that, the water district. Uh, but it also very much helped the residents. They said it was like a Starbucks up there. Everybody's got their computers and they got their coffee because they had coffee going and stuff. So, um, you know, really happy to report that, you know, these things that we've done and, and what you guys have allowed us to, to do. And, and how we can back up ourselves and have these, you know, second and third ways to back, to get the, this, this communications up and running is super important. And I just really want to say thank you for that. Okay, next slide. So while this other fun is, goes on, um, life must go on, events must still happen. Um, the teen certs, um, they are just really, um, starting to be very, very active in the high school. Um, they asked me to come and do a first A class to some freshmen. Um, I very happily came and did that. We talked about stop the bleed. I talked about opiate overdose, limping seizures, heart attacks, strokes and poisonings. Um, I think it's the first time that, um, the teen certs, um, I think they've, they've seen me teach, but not, not, I don't know the process, but, um, they were like, you're so great. Like we wanna do little tidbits of you and maybe you could do like little two or three minute, um, videos that we can share with the school or, you know, share on our website. So, um, I taught about thirty, thirty freshmen. The teacher was like, I can't believe they're actually engaged in this. So, um, because freshmen are kind of a little, you know, uh, but it, it went really well. I really loved it. It's the fun part of my job. Okay, so next slide, please. Oh, and I'm sorry, the, um, that was a, sorry, um, sorry Cory. That was a, if you look in the fire right where it says you'll learn about, this is the teen certs. They actually put that on their social media and they put it up at their school. So they did a social media thing prior to me even going. So, all right, sorry Cory, next one, please. And then we had our Why Go Firewise community meeting. Very, very exciting. We had fifteen attendees. Um, lots of good questions. Denise did a fabulous job of presenting why go firewise and the benefits of having a firewise community. Um, I think that out of this, we had, um, several interested parties in some different areas around, um, Los Altos Hills. So we'll continue to, of course, um, we have another, uh, we have a virtual meeting coming up on May tenth. Um, but we definitely had, uh, a lot of interest, a lot of great questions, um, some CERT leaders there, some other leaders in the town. Um, and I think this is gonna be something that, um, is very well received. Um, and we're hoping to do more in the future. So just wanted to give you a quick update on that. Next, um, slide, please Cory. And here is my fun night. Okay, Los Altos Hills Cub Scout Pack, they had to learn about emergency preparedness and they wanted me to come and talk about go kits. So I very happily, uh, did that. We met on March eighth at the Garner Bullis. And, um, you see here, I brought, uh, one of our boy scout liaisons from teen CERT and another teen CERT board member. Um, thirty, thirty, first, second, third, fourth grade kids, um, no tech, the tech didn't work. Um, all about talking and, um, collaborating with them. We played some emergency parent as bingo. Um, but it was a really fun time, um, so we did that as well. Um, keep going Cory, please. And then, um, we, we know that doing preparedness classes really helped to start the process of personal preparedness. And that sometimes when people take these preparedness classes, it helps them, um, realize that they maybe want to take more and they go to a CERT class. It's kind of the, the pre-class to a CERT class. So, um, I know that we had, um, this county fire does these, um, as well. But, um, we've been asked by some of the people in my CERT group to have one that's just dedicated to Los Altos Hills. So on April first, Denise and I are gonna be having a be ready, be prepared for disasters. Um, very thankful for county fire for, uh, providing us their, um, their curriculum. Um, and allowing us to be able to, uh, do this on our own. Um, so we really want to push this preparedness and then hopefully talk more about CERT. Um, but that's gonna be an upcoming event here on April first in person at town hall. Next slide, please. So out of all of these, um, you know, E P R C meetings that we have, and I know most of you know what E P R C is, but, um, you know, I'm one of the associates of the E P R C, the Emergency Preparedness and Response Committee here in town. And, um, I have asked them to really help us spread the firewise and CERT program. And in return, um, help support the neighborhood watch program for the town. So, um, one of the goals of E P R C really is to provide community education and really help push even our programs out to the residents. So one of the things that we discussed at the last meeting was having a task force that would really come up with the idea of how we can combine kind of all these community leaders that we have, uh, community leaders that do neighborhood watch. Um, community leaders that are CERT supervisors, um, you know, the firewise people that we have involved in the program. Um, and, and really how could we kind of engage everybody to look at all these different programs and to maybe start them in their own neighborhood. So if you've already done neighborhood watch, maybe you want to become a CERT. If you're already a CERT, maybe you want to be part of neighborhood watch. And with that, we're gonna encourage, um, firewise as well. It's also an appreciation dinner for them too. You know, we know they work really hard. So this is gonna be collaborative effort with, um, town staff, the E P R C members, uh, councilwoman Schmidt and then the district. So we just want to kind of let you know sort of what we're doing. We know these, that a lot of these programs are grassroots. Um, you know, we, we, the residents are used to hearing from me and Denise, but we really want to start engaging these community leaders and supporting them in growing these programs. I don't know, do you have another slide Cory? Um, so this is kind of an idea of sort of where we are with CERT program. I just kind of wanted to give you guys a quick update. Um, I don't know if people, a lot of people are aware, but, um, the town is actually the, the disaster service worker holder of the CERT program. Um, so, um, with that being said, they've made some changes recently to some of the, the procedures and way that, that we, we do things based on sort of what, what we have talked about. Um, you know, myself and Cody and Ann, who's the, um, emergency manager, uh, consultant. Um, we also have the E P R C and they have a lot of really good goals that kind of fit into our CERT program and community programs. And so, um, really we're talking about, you know, sort of how does that collaboration look like? You know, since we are kind of doing our own goal setting, maybe it's time to set combined goals, right? Uh, the town goals of what they need, uh, starts to do in a response or any, any volunteers, how the district can support that. Um, how the E P R C goals fit into that as well as our CERT program. Um, so we're kind of, this is sort of our algorithm that we've been using just to kind of put down where we, where we're at, where we want to go. Um, I will share more at the next report. I just know, I had a lot of other stuff to talk about, but I want to kind of get in that a little bit with you guys too, to kind of see, um, sort of where we're at with the, with the E P R C and how we're collaborating. And I think, I think that's finally it. Wow, that's the longest report I've ever done. I'm sorry, I took a lot of time, but, um, thank you guys very much for your support as always and, um, and thank you. And in my report.
Thank you so much, Victoria. I mean, this is, this is core to what we do. So I see, uh, Commissioner McDonald.
Hi, I'm, forgive me for being the freshman of this organization. But I, I, I have a comment about the, um, the wind events that we had last week and I'm not sure what the appropriate time would be if it ties into this or.
Go for it.
Okay, so going back to two thousand seventeen, we had the Tubbs Fire in October. That was the Santa Rosa Fire and thirty-six thousand eight hundred acres burned, fifty-six hundred structures destroyed, twenty-two deaths. This was a windy vent like we just had last week. We were fortunate that this wind event, as painful as it was, that it was in the wintertime. In two thousand eighteen of November, we had the Paradise Fire, another significant wind event like last week. A hundred fifty-three, three thousand acres burned, eighteen thousand structures destroyed and eighty-five deaths. Um, so I just kind of, I think this is important for us because with the climate change, if this wind event that we had last week would have happened in the summertime, the potential for loss of life and property in Los Altos Hills and the surrounding communities is, is significant. And I just, I just thought that should be something that we think about. For.
We just lost your voice. Oh, you're okay. You came back in. Your voice is cutting out.
He's still muted. He's still muted.
Joe, you're mute.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I apologize. Okay, sorry, starting again. This is my freshman, my freshman error. Um, you know, in, in two thousand seventeen of October, we had the Tubbs Fire, which was the Santa Rosa Fire.
We heard, we heard that. We just missed your last sentence.
Oh, they just, just that, um, that we were fortunate that this wind event happened in the wintertime. Because if it had happened in the summertime, we could have had a, you know, a significant loss of life and property in Los Altos Hills and the surrounding communities. And it, I just, it just shows how important all these goals that we have and what we're trying to do are. And I just felt it was very important to share that, so.
No, it's, uh, it's an important highlight to make. And, uh, Commissioner Tyson, your hands up.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, uh, Victoria for that, uh, presentation. It was action packed. There was a lot going on. I love seeing especially the young people and, uh, the way you're mobilizing them. And I just want to thank you and the rest of the team for your role in the, uh, in the emergency power and wifi, um, aspect at town hall. I was a recipient, a beneficiary of that as, as well. I heard that, that there were people sitting on the floor in Safeway. And that we had a much better deal down there at town hall. People were very, had nice tables. They had coffee, as you said, they had lots of power strips and it was a comfortable place. For those people like me who had fifty-one hours without power.
Wow. Uh, Captain Blue, your hands up.
Yeah, thanks. If I can unmute, I just want to do a little echoing for Commissioner McDonald's, um, comments. Um, when we, we do, uh, some education quite, uh, a bit around red flag warning days. So, you know, again, uh, you know, the, the high, uh, winds, low humidity and high temperatures generally. And also P S P S. So that's something you'll see, um, coming up here that we do focus a lot in and we talk a lot in the, um, the CERT. And in the firewise communities and in the general preparedness, uh, program like what's coming up April first. So I'd like to invite all the commissioners, if you haven't come to a preparedness class recently and thank Victoria for putting that together and everything she's done. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other commissioner comments? I'll add my little, one little bit of color. Uh, I was at that, uh, Fremont Hills meeting when the power went out and Denise and Victoria were handling the, uh, stuck elevator. That's exactly when Denise's time to speak came up. And she just, in the middle of that, just came up, gave a completely off the cuff, totally professional, totally just seamless talk. And it made me realize people with fire captain backgrounds, they know how to handle these emergencies. They just go from one thing to another. Not a hint of stress anywhere on their faces and just made it happen perfectly. So I, it was amazing thing for me to watch. And the other thing I want to highlight is that really, uh, and this speaks to how this team has come together that when you, this is kind of unprecedented event last week to see how the district resources were at the center of all the different pieces coming together. Uh, and Victoria really in charge of all the emergency services, bringing the internet. Uh, and, you know, the, the water company and the town hall and, and just all of that being joined together. We really are at the core of that. We shouldn't forget that, that we really do form an important part of this community and that's what people should take away from this. Any public comments on that report? Seeing, oh, see how you have a ton. Right, Alan, uh, you have the floor?
Uh, yes, thank you very much for all the efforts that you put in during this emergency.
Yes, thank you very much for all the efforts that you put in during this emergency. It is greatly appreciated. I would just like to suggest that you put together an action, after-action recommendation report. So that the town can be better prepared in the future. Thanks so much.
Great comment. Thank you. Okay, I guess we'll move on to item nine B, which is the Page Mill Road Evacuation Route Maintenance Project Report. And that will be Programs Planning and Grant Managers Rendler providing this report, I believe.
Yes, hello everyone tonight. I can't follow Victoria very well. But we are going to talk about the future just a bit. Our next evacuation route is a maintenance project on Page Mill Road. Those of you that have been around for a few years may recall that it was previously treated with Fire Safe Council Partnership in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. It'll consist of six and a half miles of treatment. That includes both sides of the road. And you can see on our tiny map that we'll offer treatment to all of the parcels adjacent to Page Mill. So it will be a little bit wider than it was a few years ago. And these are the project milestones that will be coming up in the next two months. We've already done the first couple. And the rest is the process of how we do the planning, file the. Secret compliance, engage the residents, reach out to everyone, and then finally put boots on the ground. So. That is the end of this item.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments on that project? I'm sure. Alan, you have the floor. There's a public comment.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm sure this is a very important project. Look forward to proceeding forward. I I my question is, is this project has already been done before. There are other parts of town that have not been done. I'm curious as to what other routes the Fire District is is planning to work on. And why those routes didn't get their first cleaning before this route got its second. Thank you so much.
I'm imagining the answer has to do with it's such a high priority route. We want to keep that one. In in clean to a magnitude degree, even before some of the lesser evacuation routes. But I'm speaking where others have more expertise. Anyone else like to answer that? Yes, please.
It's twofold. This one, we want to keep maintained what we've already accomplished. And it is one of our main evacuation routes, our primary evacuation routes, as President Spring has addressed. And it also has to do with that a lot of the planning is in place for this, the scoping and the some of the compliance and permits and things. So it's easy to pick these up as we're working on planning the new ones. Because the ones that start from scratch have more engagement that needs to happen with our partnership. So that's, that's the initial part of it. And then to answer the question about what else is coming up, I'd invite you to attend the meeting on Thursday. When we roll out our work plan, our CWPP annex, get the input for that. Because there will be, there will be maps, there will be, we will be talking about what our upcoming projects are and what our new projects are. So as we're maintaining our existing projects and past projects, we'll roll out what our new ones will be for this year.
Excellent. That was a great question leading to a wonderful answer. So and a good advertiser for the upcoming. Let's see, Denise, you have your hand up.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add one more comment that General Manager Logan had alluded to in the beginning. We also, when we work in areas, we focus kind of a concentration. She had mentioned that we're going to be doing some South District focus around the community fuel break, things like the. The new HIZ rebate program. So we trying to efficiency. When we we have planning and work going on, we did a Rastodaro, we have saddle mountain that became firewise. So we've really focused a little bit of energy in that area. And it was always the plan to do a maintenance schedule as we do evacuation routes. It's not a one and done. Yes, we're going to add other routes. And they'll have maintenance schedules, but we do evaluate the most thorough fair roads as the priorities. So hence, you've seen the progression of the projects in that respect. Thank you.
Great, thank you. No other commissioner or comments? In that case, we will move on to item ten. Which are financial and district reports. Ten A is the update on the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Actually, I'm sorry, we have nine C.
My apologies for that. Let's see. Oh, there it is. All right, nine C. This is the CWPP and Annex Four Reports. This is also Manager Rendler speaking, I believe.
Thank you. Short and sweet, the countywide CWPP update. Hasn't done too much this month. They've been working, Fire Safe Council's been working on many other projects. But upcoming is April fourth, and that's the advisory team meeting. Which you will see starting to be advertised and where I go and represent the district. And then on the fifth, the each annex holder, which we're annex holder for for. Will have an opportunity to have office hours, if you will, with the county level environmental consultants. So that's coming up on the, at the county level. And then at our level, we, I spent March seventeenth out in the field with DUDAC, our environmental consultants. And we went through a bunch of ground truthing and driving around the district with their fire modeling maps. So they've drafted some fire modeling specifically for our lower area that address in our planning for our annex. And we spent time visiting those neighborhoods and making sure that what we actually saw on the ground synced up with the the fire modeling that they've been using. And then here's our meeting on Thursday evening. So please feel free to join us and learn more about all these different layers.
Excellent. Thank you. Any commissioner questions, comments? Any public comments? Excellent. Seeing none, we will now move on to item ten. Which is the Financial and District Report Reports. Item ten A is an update on the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget. And this will be Financial Consultant Vargas providing us an update.
Yes, just a short and sweet update here is that the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Has been submitted to the Office of Budget and Analysis. And we had actually, I'd received confirmation from them that it has been received. And then it was, I believe, yesterday I did receive an email from them with a couple of follow-up questions. So Russ and I will be working on getting the answers to those questions for them.
Great.
End of my report.
Right, short and sweet. Any discussion on that? And any public discussion on that? There's much to discuss. Right, moving on to ten B is a report on the professional services agreement. In this case, with Malcolm Tam for Photography and Graphic Design Services. General Manager Logan, you want to provide a report on this?
Yes, thank you, President Spring. First of all, I want to make a correction to the spelling on Malcolm. It's M-A-L-C-O-L-M. My spelling error on that. He uses the name Mal Tam, and I've very rarely seen it spelled out. So I didn't know this, the proper spelling. So we'll make those corrections. But Los Altos Hills County Fire District is increasing its community outreach and education, which is our COE program. Staff is also developing flyers, signs, banners, PowerPoint slides, reports, digital newsletters, booklets, print media, social media. And collateral for use in the field and at events and to support district programs. And you saw some good examples of that with the reports that that Victoria did, that Eugenia is doing, our strategic plan. All of that looks authentic to the district because it has district photos in it. Noticeable to staff was a lack of photographs and graphic design services that are needed to really. Complete the COE communications. To address this gap, independent consultant services were contracted for the projects described in the scope of services. And compensation schedule in Exhibit A in the Professional Services Agreement with Malcolm Tam. Future projects may be assigned consistent with the three projects to be completed. And the three projects were the headshots that were supposed to take place tonight with the commission and staff. That didn't occur, so that will be postponed to one to April eighteenth meeting. And then the CWPP meeting and another me, another event that's taking place, which is on April nineteenth. So we'll get photographs from that. As a professional photographer, he knows how to do the photographs, how to do high res. How many times we have photos that we think are great, but they can't be used because they're not high res. And then also the the authorization from the persons being photographed to use that that image. You know, all of those things that a professional photographer knows how to do, that we as staff don't have time and don't know how to do. So those are all listed in Exhibit Eight of the Professional Services Agreement. Future projects may be assigned consistent with these three projects to be completed. The compensation schedule provides details of the photographic and editing and travel costs. Additional projects will be submitted in a proposal with a scope of services for that proposal and the estimated cost. So that's the end of my report. And the agreement was signed under the authorization of the General Manager Resolution twenty twenty. Anticipating that those photos would happen before this meeting. Unfortunately, because of the wind event, they didn't. But we do have the agreement signed. And so that's the report to the commission as to the nature of that agreement. Thank you. End of my report.
Great. And on that score, next time we have an in-person meeting with commissioners, we'll be trying to get pictures that we can from the website. Just just like the town council at Los, the town has as well of the council members there. Any comments, discussion on that? Any public comments on that? Didn't think so. Great, thank you. Moving on to item, we're almost on final approach here for this meeting. Almost about to land it here. Item ten C is a Form seven hundred annual filing reminder, everyone's favorite topic. Let's see, I think. District Director Vargas, you want to. Parrot everybody on this, I mean, notify everybody about this?
That will be me as as your administrator of the Form seven hundred annual filing. And I am pleased to report, well, we we have, there are sixteen filing requirements that I have in total. And there are four outstanding at the moment. So I just want to remind everyone that your annual filing. Is due by April third this year, actually, because the first is on a Saturday, so April third, Monday. And those who are newly on board or perhaps have just left the commission. Also have filing requirements, the leaving office and the assuming office. And those are dates thirty days. It's a different due date than April third. But I will send a follow-up, most likely tomorrow, emails to those that are outstanding.
Great, thank you so much. Any comment on that? I expect none. No public comment on that, I guess. Seeing none. Great, okay, thank you. We will move on to, let's see, items eleven, twelve, we already heard. So we're moving to thirteen A, which is Commission Member Reports. Let's see, this is an opportunity for commissioners to provide reports for any future agenda topics. Any comments from the commission on anything relevant or do you want to discuss in the future or anything that we've missed that they'd like to discuss? Seeing none. We've had a good full set of reports this evening already. So there's only nothing for public to comment on. Oh.
A comment from Jay.
Logan, yes.
Yes, I just have one, one correction to put into the record. And that is base compensation. I'm back on the employment agreement with Paige Russell. Base compensation for the part-time position for an annual basis is eighty-four thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. I just wanted to read that into the record. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's see. Item thirteen B is next regular commission meeting, which is April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, in person and hybrid. So we will attempt to be at the town council, the town hall. In the town hall council chambers. Any any problem with that or any discussion of that normal meeting time and date? Hopefully, that will be a good, nice spring weather at that time and everyone can be there in person. Any public comment on that scheduling item? I would imagine so, but anyone public is welcome to comment. Great, thank you. That moves us to item fourteen, which is adjournment. This concludes the March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District. This meeting is adjourned at eight twenty-seven PM. Emergency Service Manager BD, please stop the recording.